Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brookfield Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, April 12th. I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I will entertain a motion to approve the warrants for, uh, the payroll warrant for 41216.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Entertain a motion to approve the selectmen minutes for 119, 223, 315, 324, and 329.
I will make that motion.
One second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Entertain a motion to acknowledge the monthly reports and minutes from the fire department for March 16, Merrick Public Library Board of Trustees, 31416, and the bylog committee for 4516.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Announcements. Brookfield's 10th Annual Meet the Candidates Night. The Brookfield Republican Town Committee proudly announces its 10th Annual Meet the Candidates Night to be held Tuesday, April 19th. It's a week from today at 6:30 PM right here in the Brookfield Town Hall banquet room. The event is an open forum where anyone in attendance may ask a question of any candidate. Town elections will be held Monday, May 2nd at the town hall. All candidates running for public office are invited to attend. Local Public Access Committee is seeking members. The committee is also seeking videographers to tape meetings and local events. Those interested, should contact Ms. Mahoney at Local Access, all one word, at BrookfieldMA.us. Mr. Wallenin, District Aide Senator Anne Goby, will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 to 3:00 PM Wednesday, April 20th. All are welcome. Any other announcements? Hearing none. Anybody wish to address the board this evening? Welcome.
I'll come back up here for, uh...
Item number?
Number two and six.
Alright.
We got, the advisory board's got a question, um, on the clerks. So I figured we were doing the clerks. You got, you got the town accountant, um, as a special line item with their having their own clerk. We want to know why that's not coming out of the municipal clerk account.
Um, I'll field that one. The town accountant is her own, um, entity for budget, so that would be the request from the town accountant. Nothing to do with the selectmen's office.
Did that, did that all go through the personnel board, and did we vote to have another person put in as a clerk?
The board of selectmen allowed a temporary clerk, as far as I'm concerned.
And then we did go through, I'm pretty sure, the personnel board for the clerk. For, yes, we did. And, um, see, the only reason that we put it in with the municipal clerk, because we had some extra money. That's why. There was some extra money in that account. So that's why we allowed it to come out of that salary.
Where is the money coming from now, the municipal?
It's still, yes, it's still coming out.
Okay, but she's got a new line item in her new budget for '17.
Yes, this is, yes, this is what we told her, that, you know, she could have, you know, she wanted to continue on with the same clerk, that she should put a line item in, and it would be anywhere from five to 10 hours a week. Some hours, some weeks.
10 hours, she's got him for tenants. Five now.
Yeah, but she also, but she had said that sometimes it could be five, sometimes it could be up to the 10.
Well, what's going on? Everybody, we're getting, we're getting more and more and more people, and the town's not growing. I mean, what's going on here?
I personally, on town floor, wouldn't vote for 10 hours a week for a clerk for that department.
We didn't vote for her last night at all.
Well, she needs, well, by having the clerk in there, it has helped her a lot. She has caught up on a lot of things.
Well, she was sick, I understand.
Yes, I understand that, but too, I mean, she can help, you know, post, she's going to get her involved with the computer so that, you know, she'll be able to post different things. And also, in a way, it could be a backup for her if she was out again. And I think it's important to have some...
Well, that, that's good, Linda, but I mean...
It is important to have somebody in that office. I mean, she's, she's wanted help Dave for years in that office. Because she has a, she does have a lot to do.
You know, just more clerks, more hours for each clerk. I mean, it's just, I mean, what's going on? I mean, we're going through the budgets, and they're just getting big, big, you know, taxes are going up. I mean, what's going on? Is the town growing? Am I missing something when I'm riding around town? Do we build 50 more new houses in town? Is there more streets being added? Is the work getting done?
The work is getting done in there. See, it's helping. It's been a big help for her to have a clerk in there.
I always hear that the work is getting done, and the work is not getting done.
Well, now it is getting done.
And I'm not just referring to her. I'm referring in the water departments. And it's just more and more and more, and we seem like we're going backwards.
Well, I, I think it's a good thing that we have gotten, have got a clerk for these, for the town accountant. She had asked for a clerk for many, many years, and she hasn't had one.
Okay, so right now it's coming out of the municipal funds, is what we thought. But, but now it's going to be a new thing coming, a new line item on her budget?
And it could be anywhere from five to 10 hours a week.
Okay. Now we brought that down. Alright, so when you get up to two and six, I'll be, I'd like to weigh in if I may.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening? Alright, item number one, public hearing discussion. We put this on because Mr. Snyder, uh, wanted a public hearing in regards to town hall. The more I think about it, I don't think it's needed, so I'll just, I'll let you speak to it.
So, after our meeting last time, I talked to Sharon about the idea of hearing or PSA. Bill did such a great job with the police station, where he sat with the architect and went through things. So, there's an alternative of a PSA sort of thing, where you explain things that way. Or, because I have the opportunity, or had the opportunity, to do my little selectman observation thing, I've already put in words, in short, five, well, 400 words, um, what I believe we're talking about. As far as a workable plan, phased approach, the opportunity to go after certain funding over periods of time, rather than all at once. Where plans in the past were multi-million dollar things, all or one, all or nothing, basically. This, the, the path that this particular architect has set us on is flexibility in moving kind of dominos around the building as you phase things in, and to line those phases up with the ability to go after money. So, that, that would be something that I would encourage the voters to support.
But you're okay with not having a public hearing?
No, I, I would put in front of whether you want to do it, or you want me to do it, or...
Well, the, what I would like to do is have an article at the annual town meeting.
Right.
And, you know, basically just have the discussion on the town floor, and that's where we go from there.
Oh, I'm totally cool with that.
Like what we've done in years past. It's been like a small, we've limited, it's been like a small presentation.
Well, that, that would be on the moderator. My, my intent would be to basically have a copy of the plan that we continuously talk about, so people can grab it when they come in. A line item to transfer that $50,000 to a specific desire for what we plan on doing. We can have that discussion. And if it's going to be more, to add a dollar amount to that.
No, that's, that's fine. I'm just saying, if, if we have the opportunity to do a PSA, maybe we'll do that, too.
Alright, item number two. Mr. Chafee, did you want to join us? Seasonal worker, highway department.
Are there apps in there, two applications?
There are. Alright, at the last meeting, we discussed the individual that you put forward. Um, me personally, I don't think that that individual is worth the $15 an hour requested, or presented by the personnel board. And we had that discussion, and we tabled it, too, this evening. So I don't know if you two have had any thoughts on it.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to make the motion to recommend, recommend or move forward with the recommendation of the personnel committee. Because what I, what I now have learned, and it goes with the work that is in front of the highway department this year, is that there's a lot of mechanical work that needs to be done, can be done. And this particular individual has more than just, when we say seasonal worker, the idea of grass and all those kinds of things come to mind. But this particular individual has mechanical capabilities to help with the reconstruction of trucks and, uh, street sweepers and the like. So, I turned to Herb for what I missed in our conversation.
No, that's pretty much it. You know, I've talked to the gentleman more than once, and, uh, he's got some, some experience out there. He don't have a whole lot, you know.
He's, he's an experienced electrician.
And he's got electrical experience, which is good. So, he knows some things about electrical and wiring and stuff, which...
I, I know this individual very, very well. I would literally jump in front of a bullet for this individual. I want to say his name, but I don't think that's fair to him.
No.
Love the kid to death, but I don't think he's worth 15 bucks an hour, and I wouldn't vote for him.
Well, what do you think a fair, fair wage is? Minimum wage?
I, I would be okay with $12 an hour.
Well, why don't you go to McDonald's or whatever and work over there, because he'll get minimum wage for the $12 an hour, and do a heck of a lot less work, Steve.
He was, he was making less than that at his job that he actually got fired from recently. And the recommendation from an individual that you spoke to, and I commend you for looking into his past, um, said between 10 and 12.
I'm willing to give a kid from town a chance, alright? If he doesn't work out, I'll let you know. You know, that's my experience. If you don't give somebody a chance, they're never going to learn, Steve. Just because they come out of school...
Herb, you're attacking me right now, so lower the voice.
This is how I talk all the time, Steve. And I've told you that more than once.
I'm going to ask you to lower the voice, because it got a couple octaves higher, so lower the voice.
I talk this way all the time, Steve.
I'm not attacking this individual.
Yes, you are.
I just said I jumped in front of a bullet.
You're discriminating against him because he just got out of high school.
Okay. So that's, that's my two cents.
That discrimination can get you in trouble, Steve, so I watch your very carefully.
It's on cam, it's on camera, so anybody that's out there that thinks I'm discriminating against this individual, they can contact me personally. My number's in the book. Love the kid to death. I'm looking out for the taxpayers.
Don't discriminate against a person.
I'm looking out, you keep throwing that word discrimination, Herb, out.
You are. You just said, he just got out of high school. He's not worth $15 an hour.
He is not worth $15 an hour. If you label that as discrimination, I'm sorry for you.
What if I hire a 65-year-old guy? Is he worth $15 an hour?
It depends on his experience.
He's got none. Same, same experience.
Then he's not worth $15 an hour? No. Am I discriminating against that 65-year-old individual? No.
You probably are.
I'm looking at experience, and I'm looking out for the taxpayers of this town.
You are looking out for the taxpayers of the town. It, alright, it's up to the board. Will it, if you want to hire somebody?
So we have one-to-one, Linda, your, your discussion.
If you want to hire...
Well, I, I looked at the experience myself, and I saw that Cindy had sent us a seasonal worker from Wales.
Yeah, that they're advertising in Wales.
And I think I would be willing to pay him 14 an hour.
Well, unfortunately, we advertised at the 15, because we did the same exact thing. We talked to the board before he, before we advertised.
But the thing was, though...
You most certainly did not talk about putting a dollar amount on that advertisement. And when we, when we brought it up...
We said we were using the same setup as last year.
Clarence?
What we did is we advertised at 15. That is a reality.
It is a reality, and it was brought up to the advisory committee.
But we had told them that we didn't want him to do that because of the problem that we had with the other highway worker.
That's correct. So, so what happened was, we advertised a year ago at 15. We hired at 15. Everything all worked out. We went and advertised this time, because there wasn't a discussion, and that is totally correct. But we did advertise. We put an ad in, and it ran twice at $15. What we also then did is to say, in the future, we should not be doing that. And we asked Cindy not to do that, and it certainly has been agreed to. And additional ads have, in fact, not had dollar amounts. However, from a, from a, from a personnel bylaw, or from a personnel committee perspective, my other concern, not only did I have this gentleman having some mechanical capabilities, I would also offer that we, in fact, did advertise at 15. Further, we're looking at hiring somebody from May to June.
So, Clarence, you, that's the second time you wrote up mechanical experience. Nowhere in this resume shows mechanical experience. This is an electrician, that was a journeyman electrician, that got fired from the job that he listed on this application.
I would turn to the highway superintendent and suggest, what are the capabilities that this gentleman brought forth, brings forth? The highway superintendent says he has some mechanical skills. If electrical is not mechanical to you, okay, fine. Where I'm kind of parked is, I knew something about electrical once, and I know something about mechanical once. And somebody who has had some experience, and the highway superintendent is willing to work with that employee, to bring them along, I think is a very important thing. We also have some other issues that we're facing with the highway department, where a bunch of people didn't take a whole bunch of vacation last year. And we, we have to get that vacation off the books. And so, having somebody that we can bring in and get going is, is super important to me. The other thing is, we've run another ad, we have no, uh, people coming forth. We're in a bind, so we need to be doing something. And again, a dollar here or there, at this point, for two months? Uh, I'm sorry, it, it's more move along, get it done.
It's only two, it's only two months? I thought it was...
We only had the money up until the end of June.
Exactly.
Then we got a new budget.
Okay, so you, so how many, how long, how much further does he go into the new budget?
Right now, I don't know if I got a budget for him.
There will be a line item on it.
They will be.
There was presented at the advisory board and everything else. There was.
And I'm begging to you logic, Linda, that this individual is not worth $14 an hour.
Steve, you want to come out and work to $12 an hour and pull brush all day long with us?
I did it for free Saturday.
No, 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 I mean all day long.
I did it all day long Saturday.
Yeah.
To help a buddy out.
Okay.
It, it's a job, Herb. $12 an hour is a fair wage for physical labor.
You're going to have a lot of people that are probably going to call and say, that's unfair.
It's a $10 minimum?
Hopefully, they do call.
An inexperienced individual...
I can, I can tell you this right now. If this does not, if we don't have a seasonal help this summer, the lawn mowing in town, all of it, it's not going to get done by the highway department, because we don't have time, okay? Simple as that.
So now you're saying we're going to pay $15 an hour to mow lawns?
That's mowing lawns and doing all the other highway stuff, Steve. You're starting to put words into my mouth.
I'm not putting words in your mouth.
Yes, you are.
You just told me if we don't hire this individual, no lawn is going to get mowed.
No, no.
I E., this is...
I can mow the lawns at dirt, I can mow the lawns at my rate. That's no problem. So, you want to take and do it this way and that way, that's fine. What are you going to do, Bobby? Fire me?
Herb, Herb.
Is that what you're saying?
Herb, through the board.
You got to take and dis, fire what we're talking about.
Herb, through the board. Alright?
Like, but there's something that has to help out this summer.
Yeah. So I, if we're talking that the ad is an issue, legal issue, we run another ad, or we seek town council to see if we can approach this individual at a lower rate?
Slide that down, please. That's stuff that's on the list that needs to get done this summer. Alright? It's not going to happen. You know, we need help. You know?
We're not, we're not arguing, we're not arguing that we don't want to give you help, Herb. What we're discussing is that this individual that you put forth before us, you put forth before us, is not worth $15 an hour.
You got three applicants here. Which one do you say is worth $15 an hour?
I didn't look at the other two, because you put forth this one.
And this is the recommendation that I made. One, two, and three. You know?
To be honest with you, I don't think anyone mowing lawns primarily, or doing grunt work, physical labor, as you said, is worth $15 an hour. They, they don't have any, you, you stand before us, not only at every selectmen's meeting, but every town floor, and argue that the highway department and any other department in this, in this town aren't getting paid enough. And then we come in and we hire somebody that has no experience on doing anything, and giving them a high rate? How is that fair to anybody else that you're arguing for in these years?
You, you ask a board here in this town office area to look into that. Fair wage through the town. Has that been done?
Fair wage for what? That was, the onus is on the advisory committee through their budget process. I can't speak for the advisory committee.
So in other words, you haven't got any information back from the advisory board, where they looked into the fair wage within, in the same size as Brookfield?
When we met as a select board, we asked what the status of the pay rate was going to be. And there was no, there was no discussion had by the advisory committee at that time. That was about, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
So you don't want to look at this, Steve?
I'm familiar with what you have to do, Herb. Nobody's saying you guys aren't working. I think they gave you a round of applause, a standing ovation at the last town meeting, if you recall.
I'm just asking for some help, Steve.
And we're willing to give it to you, but I'm not going, I'm one of three. He says he'll give him 15. I'm not going to give him 15. I'd beg Linda not to give him 14. That, that, that's so unfair to other people in this town that are making under that for doing more than this individual.
Well, then somebody needs to come up, trying to keep the town up to snuff.
I'd be, I'd be willing to offer this individual $12...
The police station down there right, have you been down to the police station?
Yeah.
You like that grass that's four inches up on the siding already? Something, something should be done down there.
It's the first and second week of April, Herb. Most people don't start mowing lawns until May.
The grass is four inches up onto the siding already. So, something needs to be done.
So we'll get Paul down there if you guys can't do it. Or I'll come up on the weekend and grab the lawn mower and do it myself.
I just need some help. If you're not going to give me the help...
And we're, we're asking you to come down on this. I don't know if we have to go through town council to see if the ad jeopardizes us in any way. I'm only going to offer this individual $12 an hour.
Mr. Martel, have a question.
Mr. Snyder, have you made a motion initially?
I have.
It was, it was...
It was a pending motion.
So, so Peter, if you'd like to chair this, you can run against me next year. This, this is a board of selectmen's meeting.
I was just clarifying that.
Thank you, sir. So, so Linda, we're, we're having a discussion.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to go like $13 an hour.
May I speak before you guys get done with discussion?
I'll let you speak, Dave.
First of all, this ad that we're talking about, I spoke to, uh, I spoke to you, Clarence, at the selectmen's meeting about a month ago, when this ad first went in. And I told you that we had this discussion a year ago, when we hired the truck driver. And the price was not supposed to go in the ad, and that was rectified supposedly. This year again, it went in again. So I spoke to you at that selectmen's meeting, and I said that should be retracted. And you said you were going to look into it. It did not get retracted. The next week, it came out again.
It ran for what we paid for.
We were not supposed to put in the per hour. We discussed this a year ago. It caused a lot of problems.
I was not present a year ago, so therefore I can't take credit for that.
Okay, but I spoke to you at that selectmen's meeting, that we had that problem a year ago, and you said you'd look into it.
And I did.
The ad got reprinted again. $15 an hour.
The same ad followed as it was supposed to be. We paid for two weeks, we got two weeks.
You can still make a change, and change the ad. You can call them up and change the ads. They do it all the time. Second of all, um, we got people in this town that work pretty hard, and they're not even making 15 an hour. They've been in this town a long time. They work in a lot of departments. And we're going to hire someone for 15, a guy fresh out of school?
Yep.
That's outrageous.
Okay. That's your opinion?
And, thirdly, the original reason we were going to hire this guy was to cut lawns, not to do mechanical work. He was going to help do lawns, put street signs in, do manual labor, go out with the highway guys and help them out. That's what he was originally going to get hired for. Now you're talking mechanics?
Yep.
Maybe so.
As we hired a year ago.
But we can't, you know, the advisory board discussed this with the selectmen, you were there. And we came up around 12, 13. That's what we came up with.
That information that's in front of me?
What's that?
It was an information that was put in front of me.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm putting in front of you as well, his, his instructor from last year was recommending 10 to 12. And I believe he even, he even spoke to Herb and said not to even hire him. Am I wrong?
Excuse me?
Did his instructor say not to hire him?
No, he did not.
Then somebody's lying tonight.
So, despite the age and all this other stuff, but the first of, getting back to what's really, uh, uh, one thing to me, is, is the other workers in our town, okay? Everybody complains they're not making enough. But the ones that are working, they've been here a long time, and they're not making 15 an hour. And you're just going to hire someone for 15 an hour? You know what that's going to, that's going to cause a rift. Then you're going to have the highway guys say, hey, I'm only making a buck fifty more, and I'm doing this, I got my licenses. I want another two bucks. It's going to be a ripple effect.
So I would suggest...
So we're in, we're in the wrong at starting a seasonal worker at 15.
What, what I would turn to the chairman and suggest is that I, in fact, would ask council, if you have to ask council, that we have, in fact, set up a precedent. We set it up a year ago. We hired at 15 for the same ad. And we're now looking to hire again in this year, and we have a recommendation from the personnel committee that said 15. And now, we're, we're now backing away from that. And is there a liability to the town for not fulfilling or hiring based on that advertisement?
You haven't hired anyone yet, so we don't have to go there.
I, I, I personally feel that this individual will be an asset to the town of Brookfield. He's a great kid. He's a good work. I've seen the kid work. I've been around him when he works. He, he's a good kid. He's a great worker. He's not an individual that's worth $15 an hour.
That's not the point I was making, Steve.
To me, it is the point.
The point is, we got other people in this town that are not making that kind of money. And they've been here dedicated to the town of Brookfield, and now you're going to just say, screw you, we're going to give someone sat, not getting money?
I'm the one that's taking the bows here, the arrows.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
Because, because, because I'm saying he's not worth 15. And I've used that as an argument as well. So I'm not saying what you're saying.
Right, but now we're in a jam again, because you got this ad, which I spoke three, three, four weeks ago. I came to your board, and I says, hey, you got to take that figure out of there.
So I...
And it didn't get done.
But it didn't have any, but didn't have anything to do with us to take it out of there. It was the department that took it in, but if it's running there for two weeks, it's kind of hard to get that out of there.
So, so for...
Make a phone call. Take it out. For the next week, take it out.
Then you need to find somebody else to do this job.
So, so my question to you...
It's fine. Re-advertise it.
Would, would this board be unanimous? And that's what I want. I want a harmonious, unanimous board moving forward in this discussion. Would we be open to the fact of allowing this individual, hiring this individual at $12 an hour if town council approves the ad?
If we can make that offer.
Correct. If we can make an offer at $12 an hour.
See what town council says.
But I'd like to be able to put it into effect. It, once we, I could literally call Michelle once we get out of this meeting, and she can approve it.
And I would only turn to the highway superintendent for his input.
Well, the way I feel, like you say, you've seen him work. He'd be an asset to the town. And I feel that he...
13 is still too much, Linda. 12, 12 is the maximum.
I agree with 13. And I mean, he'll, he can get the experience, and maybe, you know, for another year, or even if they needed some more time, then he could get enough experience to be worth a $15 an hour.
So why wouldn't you say 12, if you're just arguing that he has no experience?
No, I'm just, but I'm just going down, trying to be middle of the line, in between the two.
Middle, to me, middle of the line is 12. That's high line, because it was, it was recommended to me by someone that's had him for three years, that it was a $10 to $12 an hour rate that he recommends.
We should have had this discussion before. Anyway...
So I'm going to, I'm going to entertain a motion, and I'll, I'll listen to you after, Kermit. Entertain a motion to, pending town council's opinion, if it's legal, to hire said individual for $12 an hour, effective upon town council's review. Do I have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a second?
For discussion.
Mr. Eaton?
Uh, I think it was last year, I was talking to the West Brookfield. They, they do, they hire seasonal people. And they, at the time, the lady there told me that they had 12 applicants for part-time help. I think they hired two people. I, I don't know what the rate is, but what does West Brookfield pay? If they got 12 applicant, applicants?
But, but that's, that's a discussion here. And in my mind, what sticks in my craw is, we have someone in town that kind of does the same exact thing, that's making a little over $11 an hour. That's, that's been here for years.
It's just a reference point. I don't know, West Brookfield said they had no problem hiring seasonal people. I, I don't know if they're paying 15 or 12, but they said that they, and again, that was maybe in different times, but they said that they had 12 applications that they, and three solemn ones that they, so I don't know.
Any further discussion on this motion?
I was just going to turn to the highway superintendent for his input.
On what?
The $12.
I don't think you're going to get anybody for $12. That's my opinion.
Obviously, obviously, he'd have...
You're going to get a, a person like you have in the town hall right now, for $12 an hour, that don't have a, their knowledge or anything that can move forward.
So your position is that we can't find somebody?
I doubt if you will.
Okay. So, move, um, we'll move the question.
We're not moving the question. The question's on the floor.
Well, you've got to call the vote.
The motion's on the floor, so I'm, I'm going to call for a vote.
You've got to call a vote.
No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So it's unanimous. So if this individ, if we seek town council's opinion, they're okay with the advertising the way it was, and we can offer this individual $12 an hour, you'll be able to contact him and seek his?
Yeah, get a hold.
I get a question.
Unanimous. Yes, Dave?
What happens if town council, uh, tells you, don't go, because of the screw-up on the ad?
Then, then I would, I would ask Cindy immediately to repost it, or seek town council's opinion on how to move forward.
Okay. Do all of you answer that? Okay.
Yep. But we'll prove one way or the other, whether we can hire a 12.
Alright, so item number three is passed over. All right, so item number three is passed over. Item number, actually, while Herb's here, let's take that out of order. Item number six, driveway discussion. Uh, I was informed through an email that, um, the highway department refuses to, I guess, for lack of better words, repair sixteen East Main Street, as we discussed. So, Herb, reason for that?
Well, there's really nothing to, to work there at the moment, because the driveway's been pushed around more than once with the, uh, a snowplow. So, pretty low from where it is right now.
I haven't seen it.
There's not much I can do up there, so.
So, what Herb promised to do was the berm that was there in March. Herb was going to, uh, scallop that berm to make it go away. We informed the owner that, in fact, Herb would, in fact, do that. And what happened in the meantime was through the use of a snowplow, what, the berm was flattened.
So, what are you looking for, Mr. Holcraft?
Let me see, let me see.
This is before and that's after.
This is before and that's after.
What's after?
That's the before.
The one your hand is after.
That was what was draining the water. You can see the pattern of the water being drained away.
Yeah, that's 'cause he, that's 'cause he tore the driveway up.
Well, he, he made the berm right there. He made a berm right there. That's the berm.
Yeah, that's right. And he, and when, and when he did that, the water came down here and washed out that part of the driveway, okay? I took the, the snowplow...
That's the washout. That's what we fixed.
That's right. We're not talking about that. My driveways, my driveways, right here.
That berm right there.
That's right.
That's what we're talking about.
See this hole here? That was where he got the material to make that berm, okay? And then when the water came down from the snowplow along the berm, it washed us out. Now, I, in order to get to my house, I had to take my snowplow one time and smooth it out.
Well, look at right there.
Yeah.
So, so again, the question, Mr. Holcraft, what are you looking for the highway department to do?
I'm looking for, I'm looking for this town and this highway department to put my driveway back the way it was. And I want crushed stone, this type of stone I had up here. I want some brine here, and I want it rolled and packed like it was before it damaged my driveway. There's no reason for him to put a berm here, Clarence. And he still hasn't removed the rocks over here that he wanted removed. And you told me four times that the driveway would be fixed. I talked to him on the phone.
And I told you he would remove that berm.
I removed that berm. I told you that up here. I smoothed it out the best I could with my snowplow truck in order to get to my property.
You have a permit. You need to fix your driveway.
No. My driveway was approved by this town. You got a letter that shows you that, correct? Yes. And then he came in and tore my driveway up after it was approved. What do you, you wanna take sides with him, you do it, but stick to the facts. Stick to the facts.
What I...
I'm a big taxpayer in this town.
Dave, Dave, let, let Clarence...
Me too. I pay a few taxes as well.
That's good. That's good. We're talking about my driveway being torn up.
What I see...
Unnecessarily.
What I see is that water was flowing across your driveway and into the street. Am I correct or not?
Yeah, 'cause the berm made it do that.
The highway superintendent had a berm created that allowed the water to channel away from the street. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Well, it appears in the...
We've had heavy rains and that, and they never had a problem up here. All of a sudden, I have my driveway torn up. For what?
We, we have a frog pond over here that created this.
Yeah, I told you all about that, and I told you how we're gonna fix it, and we fixed it.
And we did.
Right.
And so, with this, what was, what the promise was, is that that berm would be removed.
No, I removed the berm. I told you that at the last selectmen's meeting, that I removed it with my plow truck, so that's not true. No, stick to the facts.
What is correct is what was promised is that this would be removed.
No, no, that's not. Play that tape back. Do you ever get a copy of it?
So, regardless...
What I want done, the agreement was that he was gonna come up and regrade the driveway and take out the rocks.
I had never made...
The rocks I went, the rocks...
I never made that commitment to this, of this town. No way.
Herb was gonna come up and fix the driveway. That means regrade it and remove the rocks that were piled up on the left.
So, I'm confused on regrading. What did you, did, which way did you push that berm? Did you push it up towards the road?
Down.
So, you pushed it back towards where it came?
Pulled, pulled it back the best I could where it was.
You mean, you pulled it back into your driveway, not out towards the road?
No. Well, I pulled it towards the road because he took it from the edge of the road.
It's in front of the road.
So, so...
No, but I didn't know, but I didn't know, maybe if he had taken it, like smoothed it back into his driveway.
I mean, you can see how the plow actually took it down.
Yeah.
And what you see is gullies running from here. You don't see anything. This is all fixed over here. The good news is it's fixed, right? So, this is washing down from the top of the driveway. That's what's there. And, and you can see how the, the snowplow pushed it, because there's the blade of the snowplow.
That's where the berm was.
Yeah.
Right. But I had it, but I had it, but lis, listen. I took the snowplow to take the berm out, because he tore my driveway up. He made a berm, okay? That's the reason, and I told you I did the best I could, but I said, "You said you were gonna have the highway department come up and fix my driveway." Four times, you told me that. You wanna take sides with him and be a puppet, do it, but don't lie to me, okay? I talked to you at the post office. I talked to you on the phone, and you talked right here in front of this camera. Right on this camera, twice, you said you were gonna fix it.
So, so Dave, Mike...
You can show the pictures all you want. That's what he's supposed to be fixing, that damage.
But, but...
That damage doesn't exist anymore.
That damage right there was because, because I had to smooth it out because of what he damaged my driveway.
Mr. Chairperson, can I say something?
You can.
With all the driveways that have been put in this town and everything else, it hasn't had any problem except for one.
Well, that's...
You approved my driveway.
I have not approved the driveway.
You approved it. You got a letter, and the letter was...
Gentlemen, through the board.
I have not approved any driveway. I haven't signed off any driveway yet.
First, first and foremost, back to your original discussion about new driveways. Two or three driveways down the road from me, we had an issue last year. Correct? He restructured his driveway.
Existing driveways.
Correct.
Yeah.
He closed off one side, and then all the water was coming. We literally had like four inches of ice.
Correct.
You didn't come by with a loader and put a berm in front of his driveway.
No, I scraped all the ice out of the road as best I could, so it wouldn't be a safety hazard during the wintertime. I spoke to the homeowners.
And we had this discussion. He was gonna fix it.
And the homeowners realized what the problem was, and they took care of it as best they could for the rest of the winter.
Correct.
And they hired the contractor to come back and correct the issue.
Correct, which it is, and he's got a drain pipe under there that's draining to the...
That had nothing to do with a driveway permit, 'cause it was an existing driveway before my time.
So, back to the permit. You and I met with Mr. Holcraft, and you approved what he did.
I said it looked fair, or whatever you wanna call it.
You, and then you came to a meeting and asked why his driveway wasn't paved yet. You don't approve a driveway and then ask why his driveway's not paved yet.
Have you seen my paperwork? Has it been signed off? Has his paperwork been signed off?
Clarence showed...
It has not been signed off.
Clarence showed a letter from Cindy stating that it was approved.
No!
In that, in that tag.
Yes, you did. You showed a letter here. You showed us a letter right here on that camera.
Dave, calm down.
No, I'm sick of the lies from this guy.
Calm down.
Yeah. He wants to be a puppet. He's gonna take it.
Dave, if you're not gonna calm down, I'm just gonna stop this conversation, and nothing's gonna be resolved.
Okay, I'll calm down. I'm real calm right now.
It's a civil meeting.
Yeah, well, I'm sick of the lies in this town.
Mr. Chairperson?
One second, please. I want Clarence to find the letter.
Aye. I'm gonna look for it.
Remember the, remember the packet that you passed out?
Yeah.
I thought there was something signed to it.
Where's the existing driveway permit that, uh, supposedly is signed?
I have everything clipped together. I just have a bag full of...
So, you want to have patience and let Clarence...
Clarence has got all the documents.
I, I just don't know that I have it. It's here tonight. That's not that one.
So, while he's looking, Dave, my, and again, this is my only question, is that I have no problem with, with, if we can't ask him to do it, 'cause he's not gonna do it, telling him to do it, to come down there with a loader and, and actually backblade with a loader. It's gonna be a lot more compact. He's not gonna bring a, a compactor down there and compact. He's not gonna bring a roller down there and compact it. But my question is, you're asking for more material. There was never material taken away from that.
Yeah, but it's all ground up now. So, you're gonna, I had a nice material on the top, so...
It should still be...
You're gonna have to put it back the way it was?
But it should still be there.
Well, it's all underneath, though. It's all ground in now.
Mr. Chairperson, according to the, his, that location driveway permit, it says one twenty-foot length of pipe. Not forty feet. So, my recommendation as the highway department, to the board of selectmen, to this person here where this driveway permit is, it needs to be put to one twenty-foot length of pipe in complete driveway.
But you were gonna...
Before I will sign off.
You were gonna let it go? We, we sat there, and we talked about it.
You talked about it, you're in the hills, but one thing keeps leading to another, and so on and so forth. The paperwork that he approved, that he signed and gave a check for.
I, I agree with you, but at the same time, when we went there the second time, you approved it.
The thing is, is we'll keep going back there.
I don't wanna keep going back there. I thought this was resolved when, when you three went out there.
It was until he tore it up.
Well, well, he tore it up before you guys went out there. That's why I think it was resolved.
The amount of water that come out of that driveway, and washed down across the street, washed out a bunch of stuff down the road.
Yeah, that's not true.
All come out of his driveway.
And the culvert took care of that, what Clarence did?
It is for the moment.
It is. It's...
It's working great. It's very simple. The diagram I made, it was very simple. We went up there, we did it.
Well, let, let, let me put it this way. The diagram I drew was more correct.
I'm the one that designed it. It was very simple.
Guys, guys, guys.
And you have to just add it to it like it's a big to-do list.
We're not in grade school.
Yeah. Getting back to the, getting back to...
So, the material there.
If I have forty feet or twenty feet on that driveway, it doesn't matter, 'cause it's a given both sides.
The problem in front of...
It's a safety factor.
The problem in front of this board right now is the two requests was to regrade it and bring material in. I don't see a need to bring more material in. I have no problem with him coming back and regrading it. And that would be for the sole purpose of backlaying it, because that's gonna put the hydraulic pressure on it and back it up.
Well, if he does it properly.
I think he's pretty confident on how to backlay it.
That we managed to be seen at this town.
That wasn't the last...
Mr. Chairperson?
That's not the one, because this one, this one shows that he, they received a check.
In order for him to, uh, pave the first ten feet of that driveway, he's gonna have to remove material there anyway, so he's gonna have to hire a contractor to remove material in the first ten feet of that driveway to pave it.
But the onus would be on him to do that.
Well, then, you're gonna have a machine here, making a mess of the whole thing anyways.
But the problem is, the problem is, I'm gonna tell you right now. If you would've done that to my driveway, I would've been more upset than Dave Holcraft.
I didn't, they got another driveway up on one corner here up there to get the water so it ran into the basin.
Without, without you contacting me and doing, I went up there. I was down in Florida. I got...
I'm still on town property.
I got four phone calls on that when I was in Florida.
We're still on town property.
When I came up and I went up there, Herb, it, it wasn't, it was literally a berm. I couldn't have gotten over it with my car.
With the amount of water that was running out of there, you had to do that, Steve.
There should've been some type of communication with the homeowner. There should've been.
I don't have any telephone numbers, man.
Everybody knows how to get ahold of me.
You know how to get ahold of Dave Holcraft.
You're the only one that doesn't know how to get ahold of me.
I, I think, I think the only...
I wanna read this letter right now. This letter is to confirm that the driveway at sixteen East Main Street, property owned by, by you, was in acceptable condition on October twenty-seventh, oh fifteen.
Keep reading.
Herb has given his okay for the driveway to be paved.
The driveway's not paved.
That's correct.
But that's a sign off of accepting.
That's not a sign off.
It was ready, right, but it was the angle, and everything was fine, the length of pipe, everything was good, except for the paving. So, we, don't, don't jump in, okay? The fine, the driveway was fine, the angle was good. You were happy with it.
So, so...
And I did everything you said.
So, Herb, without the board taking action, making a vote and all that, would you just go up there with a loader, backblade it, compress it a little bit, make it nice?
So, it can be torn up again, so we can paint it.
That's on him.
Who's gonna tear it up? The only person who tore it up was you.
Dave, would you be willing if him or Donnie went up there, backladed it with a loader?
Yeah, if, if, yeah, if they go up there and do it nice. Send Donnie up there. He'll do it nice.
There's no doubt in my mind Herb or Donnie would do a good job on it.
And he doesn't like the rocks on the left side, so let him take them off at the same time.
The case before us isn't the rocks on the left side. The case before us is what you, what you brought before us.
Well, while they're going up there, they should do two things at the same time.
That's on them.
No, I ain't removing any stones that was put there by the homeowner.
The issue here is backlaying what they did.
Yeah, if you're gonna, if, once again, I asked Clarence, he said he was gonna take care of this, and I also, if you remember what I said, is, is he gonna orchestrate it, and then will it be done, is what I asked, said to him.
Well...
And obviously, that didn't happen.
You don't wanna shoot the messenger here, because Herb's the one that told him that he wasn't gonna do it. So, I'm asking...
Who's, who's in charge of her? Who's the boss of her?
Then that's why it's on this agenda.
No, you three.
Correct, and that's what he just did.
So, let's, let's have some, uh, let's have some discussions and decisions, yeah.
We've, we've had a ten-minute discussion, and I'm asking...
Oh, now let's have a decision.
I'm asking you, Herb. Are you okay with going up there, or Donnie going up there and backlaying it?
We'll go up there and take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable?
When it's done, he's, it still has to be paved, and it still has to be approved. It has not been approved. Everybody thinks it's still approved, which it's not.
But he's, he's, he's okay, he's okay to pave. Once he paves, you're not gonna make...
No, he's not okay to pave. Even if I backblade, he is not okay to pave.
What does he have to do to pave?
He's gonna drop the gravel down at least two inches or better in order to pave.
That's at his discretion. But you're not gonna, once he paves, you're not gonna make him tear out twenty feet of culvert, are you?
To me, I want twenty feet there. I don't want forty feet there, but, you know, we're, we just keep fighting this back and forth.
And I want this to go away. I thought, I thought through Clarence's work, he's gone.
Steve, you know, nothing's ever gonna go away.
This'll go away. If you're going backlade it, Dave, this is going to go away.
It'll never go away, because it's, it's gonna be one other issue to another issue.
When is this getting paved, Dave?
We're talking about this issue right now, Herb, right now.
So, it's gonna be backladed tomorrow. When's it gonna get paved?
Soon as the weather, soon as things dry up.
Do you have a timeframe? Have you contacted him?
No, I don't know how the weather's gonna be.
But you, you want, you understand with runoff and whatnot, there's a potential of this going away.
But listen, now you people, you're talking, you're talking in circles again here.
I'm not. I'm, I'm straight.
This was, everything was handled and done properly to his...
No, it wasn't.
Then why would you send this to me? What do you think? I'm stupid?
It appears.
It appears. What do you, it says approved right here. You sent this to me. Come on, you're talking to me now. You're not talking to some retard.
I, I'm done with the driveway up there, so I'll walk, I'm, we'll backblade it, and I'm out of there.
Thank you.
And when the driveway gets paved, somebody's gotta take and inspect that, and I want nothing to do with it.
Well, that, you would inspect it to sign off on it.
You put it down...
Like I said, I still haven't signed off any paperwork on that driveway yet.
But he's okay to pave.
And it's pretty bad that, you know, one driveway out of, uh, you know, couple hundred driveway permits in town, we have one issue.
Yeah, but you didn't go, you didn't go around tearing up everybody's driveway but mine. That's the issue.
So, as far as I'm concerned, this is rectified. You're gonna backblade it tomorrow?
Yep, we won't cut trees tomorrow. We'll go up and take care of that.
Herb, come on.
No, it's...
First thing in the morning, seven AM, getting a loader, go down there, backblade it, and then... First thing in the morning, 7:00 AM, getting a loader, go down there, backlate it, and then...
And the guy's going to be there at 7:00 AM to go cut trees, so I'll just call him up and cancel him.
Well, then you can go, you can go for the driveway Monday then.
You're going to, you're going to an extreme. It'll take you, it'll take you 10 minutes to get up there, five minutes to backlate it, and 10 minutes to get back.
No, let, let him, let him have this tree guy come in, and he can come Monday, he can schedule for Monday or something when he's not having a tree guy come in. How's that sound?
It's not going to happen after this week, so it's going to be done this week.
Then next time, we shouldn't, you shouldn't go tearing up people's property because you know you're going to have to...
So then I would ask Herb, you do it at your discretion where it's not going to interfere with the tree work?
I want a timeframe on that.
You're, you're the, you're the one that just recommended a week?
Yeah, within, that's fine, but I'm asking, is that going to be good?
So within a week, are you, you're not a good within a week?
Because he said, he's demanding a timeframe from me, okay?
You told him tomorrow.
You just asked him when he's going to pave the driveway, all right? You should ask him to put a time on it.
Yeah, I'll, if, if the weather's good, I'll be done in 30 days.
The wea, the weather was good last year. If he completed everything last year, he would have been done in all of it.
Is, is there...
This issue wouldn't have been happening.
Is there a timeframe on driveway permits?
Yeah. Yes.
And when did he apply for the permit? Linda had that form.
It was 2014.
It doesn't matter at this point anyway, because...
Yeah, it was 1020, 1021, 14.
And what's the timeframe?
Yeah, what's the time?
Two years.
Two years?
So he's got...
He's got a year.
So the timeframe has gotten, is not, it shouldn't even be entered into this discussion.
Well, you, you wanted a timeframe.
And he's saying, and he's saying he doesn't have the time to do it. Match 8, I was down here, and Clarence, you told me he was going to go up at the end of that week to fix it, and then you, and then it didn't happen. Oh, it's raining, and then the next week it didn't happen, and the next week it didn't happen.
Well, I think it was two weeks, but that's okay.
What's today's date?
12.
Yeah, it's over 30 days already, and it still isn't fixed. So I've been pretty patient. I even talked to him, said, I'll be patient with it. If he's working up on the corner on Weber Road, I don't want to take him away from that. Didn't I talk to you about that? I didn't want him to take away from that. I was very patient about it. Even though my driver got torn up, I was pretty cool about it. And I'm being, I'm pretty understanding right now, too. If he, if he's going to do trees tomorrow, let him do his trees, but next week he should schedule this in with some other stuff besides tree work.
So can we do it within a week without jeopardizing any of the work in town?
It's not going, it'll, it'll have to happen this week, period.
Can you make it happen this week?
Yeah, like I said, we won't cut trees. I'll have, I got all the things that I got to do also.
Let's just get...
Period.
Huh?
And the, the tree issues...
I think, I personally, I personally think you go into an extreme if you're going to cancel trees, where it could fall on a citizen.
I want to get two people.
Yeah.
All right? Two people ain't going to go out and start cutting trees with the tree guy, and that's it. It takes more than two guys, because we're not young people anymore to pole brush and pump wood all the time. We're all over the hill.
Speak for yourself.
All right, so I'm going to leave it in your hands, understand that I, I, I think I can speak for the board that we don't want to jeopardize tree work for backlading a driveway.
And I'm staying the same. I'm being patient, once again.
So I'm going to add, add discretion of the highway su... At the highway, at discretion of the highway superintendent within a week.
Like I said, it'll get done tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, sir.
It'll be done tomorrow, and I'll be, I'm not going to...
I'm, I'm begging you not to jeopardize tree work, but I can't.
Well, we got, we only can do so much tree work, and that's it.
Yeah, I'm not going to micromanage your activities for tomorrow. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Are we good?
No, I'm just going to keep this stuff, so we'll have it for the next discussion.
There's not going to be a next discussion because we're done.
I pray.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Hope he settles it.
Item number four.
Before you start going to something else, I know you've been... We're going to do something about cleaning catch bases. What do you want to do?
Me? Did you ever find, we discussed at a Thursday meeting, did you ever see if Mass DOT was going to allow Chapter 90 money for it?
Well, we have already been approved for a part of it.
You were going to, you were going to have Cindy call to see if it could be...
This has happened to come up. It happened in, uh, Seabrook, Mass.
That's the boom?
Yep.
Can we purchase that with Chapter 90 money?
I'm pretty sure that we can, yes.
And then what are we going to hitch it to? An old truck that you have now?
We're going to have to go through one of the other trucks and set it up on that.
Okay.
Tell me you want to do it.
So what, what can we get, um, what are you going to pay for this one?
That, uh, I got to call a gentleman back tomorrow on that.
Where is it, Herb?
Uh, what did I say? Is Seabrook, Mass?
You said Seabrook, yes.
Seabrook, okay.
For how much?
Eighty-five hundred bucks. It's, uh, brand new. There's only three that were made. The guy, uh, went out on business on his own hand, so...
I'll entertain a motion to allow the highway superintendent to purchase through Chapter 90 money, Catch Basin Boom from Seabrook, Mass. for the amount of eighty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we'll second it.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Here, you got all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Now, you have a, or do we have it in our other, while he's still here?
I just put that in other. Uh, we have the Conservation Committee. That's clear cut. That's done. UMass Wetlands Survey has nothing to do with him. You have the agenda in front of you.
Okay, so you have the, yeah. Do you have any of your other, yeah, because there was an email earlier today...
There's nothing in the other folder.
A thing from Cindy about, uh...
That's the Conservation Committee WPA form.
Okay, so you don't have any question?
No, I spoke with Cindy today.
So we're okay. So, good.
All set?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So that item four, U.S. Wetland Survey, we discussed this about a month ago. We had asked the administrative assistant to forward to two entities. One was the Conservation Commission. They had no problem. They, um, and then the Superintendent's Office. The Superintendent's Office requested that the survey be done in late September or October. So I'll entertain a motion to allow said survey to be completed between late September or October.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. If you haven't noticed, I'm taking minutes as well.
We noticed. But I appreciate it.
I thought of that this morning in the shower. Item number five, Attorney General's Abandoned Housing Initiative. Although it seems like it was a, uh, week ago that we sat at a meeting yesterday, um, it was just yesterday, and it was less than 24 hours ago. And it was one of the most, I want to say heartfelt, emotional discussions I think I've ever been involved in, with a lot of questions asked, and they were good questions. Um, at the end of the discussion, the onus is taken by the Board of Health that they are liable for individuals that violate any code like that. Through a vote of the Board of Health last night, they're going to set a time to actually survey the entire town, itemize every single property that they feel is in violation, compile that list in another meeting, decide what letters they want to send out certified to those people, and then the response of those certified letters, through that, the list will be incorporated to the Attorney General's Office, and then we will send that list to the Attorney General's Office after that process. Yes, sir.
That sounds like an overwhelming job, a job for the Department of Health.
They, they recommended it through discussion, and I, I commend them highly for taking on that task.
So they will, they will look at all properties abandoned and not abandoned?
Well, that, that was part of the heartfelt question because, and I made that argument last night. We, we need to take abandoned off. We need to take all these words off. The key word that we have to focus on is violation. That that's the word that has to be our key phrase. We, we can't worry about abandoned properties. We can't worry about bank-owned properties. Me personally, the letters I'd like to be sent are the bank-owned properties.
I was going to say that, too. Just the bank-owned properties also would be the ones that would be, the ones that need to be...
Why don't we start with that?
Because they, they don't want to start something we can't take back. I'm on board...
No, start something that...
That we, that we can't stop.
No.
Dave? Well, Dave, Dave was at the meeting as well last night.
The Health Board decided that they are going to send letters out before we go to the AG.
They're going to send letters?
To all the homeowners in town first, and then if they don't do what they're supposed to, then they may take the next step of going to the AG. And I think that's what you're looking at.
There's a couple of issues here. So you, you were going to make an external review. You're not going to go inside of it, are you?
You can't by law.
So you're going to look at, so you're going to...
They can't even go on, they can't even go on the...
Looks at my house and say, they're going to send me a letter, and what they, what's the letter going to send?
That the onus is on them for the letter.
Well, just the experience with the Attorney General's Office was, is that you send letters to banks, you get response. You send letters to homeowners, you don't get response.
And we had...
So what do you send letters, who's going to send letters to homeowners? The homeowner says,
Well, that was, that was...
Nice letter, goodbye. So what happens?
That would be added to the pile that we would send to the Attorney General's Office. They spoke...
But you don't send the, you only send to the Attorney General's Office, not more than 10. They have to be abandoned residences. Abandoned resi, that's the clarification. You can't, if somebody's garage is falling down, that doesn't count. If it's beyond repair, that doesn't count.
I, I'll, I'll pass on the abandoned piece. I did not know it was strictly abandoned for the Attorney General's...
Abandoned, AHI, abandoned residential houses.
What's that mean, abandoned?
Abandoned...
What's that mean?
It's not being lived in, and, uh, period. It's not being lived in. It hasn't been lived in for a period of time.
No, that's not right. I, I, I've owned houses in other towns, and I kept the grass cut, and I owned it, paid my taxes, and the towns never bothered me, ever.
Well, it wasn't abandoned, and they, and they get it in good shape. They have to be abandoned residences, and they have to violate safety, health, sanitation.
Well, that, that's where the Board, and that's where the Board of Health, and I'm, I'm happy to hear three members that agreed unanimously that that's their charge. And, and, and Dan kept going back to, to the, I believe, I don't remember her name, but she was the head of the Worcester County Department, how she brought up the enclosed, non-enclosed pools, the fallen-down sheds, and the debilitating floors where firefighters, he brought, he talked about children, and I kept bringing up firefighters because we have to really face, and Chief, I'm glad you're here. We had, had, they contacted you today in regards to the signs on the buildings? All right. I know I spoke to you years ago about that. What's the clarification on the mandate? Is there a state mandate that we have to label buildings, abandoned buildings with the X and the half line?
I think it's a lawful option.
I, I've never seen the law on that.
I thought it was a law after the mill fire.
When you put something like that, you're, you're telling people it's open for...
Well, no, what you're telling is you're telling the men and women that are going to rush into that building that it's not worth rushing in there because they could potentially die. That, that, that's the...
In a small town like this, everybody knows what's going to...
I, I'd argue that Worcester has precincts within fire departments. They knew what the mill fire was about, and they rushed in because they thought there were two human beings in there, so...
Have you given the Department of Health a timeframe to get this done? I mean, those guys, they're, they're employees. They work, you know. What are they going to do with it?
The, the letters, well, Dan was right on top of it. He had, he had contacted the Assessors' Office. He had field cards on properties. He had taken rides. He had a list himself. He, he was on top of it this weekend.
Pretty subjective list. I mean, they're going to go by my house and say it's, 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 meet the codes? By your house, by the other's house? How do they, what are the, there's got to be some limitations on this. This is a very broad approach they're taking. I think it's going to be you before you get this...
I, I disagree because I'm going to stay on top of it. That's why I went to the meeting last night. I, I was actually encouraged, Kermit, after the discussion last week.
I'm encouraged.
Are you?
I mean, here's a program that's worked with over 100 communities in the Commonwealth, and they've got 1,300 houses, and we're reinventing the process. And, uh, and it's worked, and if we went after just the bank-owned abandoned properties, they have an 80% factor of getting them done. We could start this program in weeks and start the process in months to get some of these bank-owned abandoned properties on, back on the tax roll. This process guaranteed...
Well, if, if they're bank-owned, they're already on the tax roll because the banks are paying the taxes to keep them.
Yeah, they are, they are. You're right. They are on the tax rolls.
My issue...
They are abandoned. They're blight.
My, my issue was...
And they're, they're blight and they're safety hazard.
My issue is the safety through violations.
Yeah. Well, whatever.
Me personally, I think it might take them three months to do it. That's just where my timeframe is, because once they've compiled that list, they're...
So they, then, then they send letters out to all these people?
They were going to give them certain...
Can you imagine the impact that people are going to have when they start getting these letters? That, you know, your house is an unsafe situation? I'm just going to send out 50 letters.
If it takes 50 letters, I, I encourage it, because you have a gentleman that's sitting in the back that takes care of dozens of men and women that run into those houses that could potentially die because there's an issue there. I commend 50, I, I, 10's too little. There was an individual that only wanted to compile a list of 10 and send out 10 letters. We need to hit every single house in Brookfield.
AHI, the Attorney General said, look, don't go overboard with this. Start off with 10. See how it works. You may end up doing five. Then, if it works well, then you put another list together and gradually work through it.
There's no...
Don't overwhelm the process.
There's no doubt, there's no doubt in my mind that there will be a list of 10 by the three-month period on that timeframe. There was talks about bringing it to the town meeting. I, I don't encourage that. Dave?
I just read... I got a question for you, then, Kermit. I mean, the whole idea, I thought of this program was for blight, places that don't look good. I thought that was the whole purpose of when it first come to town. I mean, blight, how it looks bad. Now, the two houses over on Kimball Street, they're bank-owned, and those houses look better than some of the other houses in this town. And there's, there's some stuff in the yard that needs to be removed, and the health boards say, hey, remove the stuff. But I think before we send the AG after normal citizens in our town, they should get a letter like they agreed on last night, saying, hey, you don't clean up your property, if you don't fix whatever's dangerous, then we're going to go to the AG. But why stick the AG on them when you don't even give them a chance to? That's why we got boards and committees in this town to work with the residents.
The, the, blight is one of the issues. The safety, health hazards, sanitary, septic systems, so forth, are...
Well, the septic system would be nothing if the house is empty. They're not going to be overflown if they're empty, so that...
Well, there's, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of bullets on that list. I, I'm not willing to send names because the grass is overgrown.
I mean, where do you start? Where do you finish in, you know?
Or there's a shingle missing on the roof, or there's a dead raccoon in the yard. I, that's not where I would send it. That's where I'm at. I, blight, I, I, you know, we, we talk about...
That's a sub, that's very subjective.
100%. You know, to me, solar panels on a house are ugly. That's just my, I'm not going to put a solar panel on my house because I don't like it.
But what's the purpose of this? What's the purpose of this program if it's not the looks?
It's not the looks.
To me, it's a violation. It's a safety issue.
It's a safety issue.
Okay, that's the health boards. That's their job.
And that's why we came to the meeting last night, and they took charge, and they took onus of it.
And they're, they're working it. I, I think we need to back up. It's the Attorney General's Office looking at how it could help through the housing meltdown, is really how this thing all got started. So that what, what they found and they've proven is that by approaching the banks, because they don't want to leave these houses just not there because eventually the house will cave in, but what, what could the Attorney General's Office do? They could approach the banks and say, hey, look, put this back into capitable, um, condition so that, again, you don't have that building where vagrants or others are living in there, so that it, it's a protection of that. So that's how it kind of got started, and again, 100 towns, they've had success, especially with the bank-owned buildings, to get people back into those buildings. And I, and I laud them for doing that. What I also laud is the guys last night saying, they're going to take a ride around with, I think it was Saturday. I mean, that's how quick they were going to jump on this thing, and they were going to look and identify a number of buil, a number of buildings where they weren't going to be writing, writing hundreds of letters, it was tens of letters, to homeowners to give them heads up, homeowners, banks, heads up that this was happening, and then they were going to pick 10 and move forward. And, and again, Steve's talking, three months, I'm thinking less than that, that they're actually...
My rationale, my rationale is compiling the list, getting the list together, having a discussion, and they talked about a 30-day lead time from that letter. So once they sent the letter out, you have 30 days to do X, Y, and Z. If you don't, then we're going to take action. So I'm factoring those timeframes in as well.
And I just see them taking action, and I, I, again, I laud them as well for doing work.
And I hope there's the bank-owned properties that they are going after.
Because quite honestly, by having just a few things moving, it, it gives a signal to others that they need to be moving, and that'll be good.
Just a couple of other questions. The Attorney General said, if we should give us this list, we do all the homework. We find out who, who owns the property, who owns the first mortgage on it, who owns the second mortgage. Well, they do all that work. We're going to be, that, that responsibility is going to be on us to do that. I tell you what, if I got one of those letters to me...
You'd ignore it.
I'd, I'd ignore it. I'd absolutely ignore it.
And if you're...
So then, so I ignore it, so you give 30 days. So what are you going to do to me?
You'd be one of the 10 that we'd send to the Attorney, Attorney General's Office. They, they were...
Well, no, I'm not abandoned. I, my house is not abandoned.
Then I'd be on the Board of Health.
Then what are they, so they're, are they going to sue me? So this is going to be a legal issue?
That would be on the Board of Health.
We'll have 15 legal...
If you have a property that a child could get hurt on or a firefighter could get killed in...
That's a... What do you have to say?
Uh, a floor that's falling apart on a site visit, we, we can go in and visit. We'd have to pay the inspector to go in and do it. We'd have to pay to have that inspection done, and then once it's deemed that it's dangerous, then we get into legality of it.
So, so they're going to go, uh, look at, just look at externally, look at the property?
Yeah, they can't go on the property. They have to do a drive-by. They can't, because I asked to rattle doors, and they said they can't go on the property, rattle doors.
Now, how can you tell if it's a safety hazard or a...
A, a, a roof that's Boeing could physically collapse, walls that are literally leaning like this, so...
You're right. You may only find five houses down the town, because the ones on Kimball Street, probably externally, they look okay. But they are a potential hazard because they have, people could, vagrants could break into them and so forth. But, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know what their standards are.
Well, that's, that's when we find that 10-house list that they compiled and see if it's on it.
Attorney General has a criteria list. They come out.
I, I gave...
We give them a list, they come out, and they say...
I gave Dan that packet that they gave us, because only the three of us got that whole packet. I gave Dan, the Chairman of the Board of Health, that packet, and he's actually talked to her twice.
And he's what? I'm sorry?
He's spoken to her. Was her name Amber?
The gal was here.
Yeah, the girl that was here.
He's actually...
Monica?
It was Amber, Monica?
And Monica was saying that.
The lady that was sitting here...
Yeah, Monica.
Yeah, but the other one was actually, I think, her boss.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think he spoke, he spoke to one of them twice.
Monica. Okay.
But I haven't lost sight of it, I'm not sweeping it under the rug. That's the direction they want to go, and if it's just less, if it's more than ten, it's the whole town of Brookfield, I congratulate them for the effort, the ambition.
I hope we don't open a can of worms, that's all.
That was their concern as well.
They do, too.
What's that mean, Kermit? Open a can of worms? If that's what we're doing right now? We're opening, that's what we're doing.
Because there's so many variables in my house, Bobby Bond's house, your house, or whatever, and how do they say, "Well, his house probably qualifies, yours doesn't?" If I got a letter like that again, I would just, I would just probably ignore it.
I wouldn't, I'd act on it.
What would you do?
Well, if they said, if they said your roof's caved in, I would act on it, I'd fix it. If that stuff in my yard, they said, "Dave, that should be there," I'd remove it.
Okay, well, maybe you would, but I'm not...
I mean, I have, I mean, I've been in, you know, different towns, and they're telling me different things, I just do it.
Well, I must say that around your yellow sign, there's a lot of debris and stuff.
No, no, if you looked, no, there's no debris there, it's all been picked up.
But it has, but it has...
Periodically, I put things there to give away, that has, that's a whole different issue. We're talking about houses.
Yeah, right.
I thought the original thing of this was to try to make the town look nicer. Now you, now you wanna go way to, now you wanna go into people's private homes and say, "Hey, your ceiling's bad, or you got a creaky floor," I mean, this is America, this isn't Germany.
We're not saying that at all, nobody in this room is saying...
You're going in enough, you're allowing it not, you're allowing it not.
I'm saying, I'm saying if a roofline is sagging and...
Well, you should be repaired.
And there's a huge hole in the roof that obviously is gonna let water in and rot the floor, and Peter and his men and women go in and go, and fall through that floor and die, that's...
That's beyond notice.
That's something that Brookfield should take care of through the Board of Health.
Exactly, I agree.
And the Board of Health is in charge, and they're working the problem.
And back full circle, I'm very confident that they're gonna move forward in a, in a very productive manner.
Methodical.
I don't know if it's some methodical, but productive, the key word used to be productive.
If Dan's already got on it, I mean, Dan's a good man, and I'm sure he's...
I don't know what...
I will.
I'm gonna stay on top of it. And I didn't, you know, I want, wasted time seems derogatory, but I didn't waste my time last night coming here, we had a great discussion.
It was a good meeting.
Yep.
Anything else on this issue?
Nope.
And Kermit, thank you for being part of this discussion and being active in it. Item number, we've already done six, item number seven, DPW discussion, we brought this up last time, through the administrative assistant, Linda has some information in regards to it.
Well, I've been through, I got, I had talked to Bruce Clark last week about it, and he, Bruce is in favor of this, and I think Kermit was also, his department...
No, I would not, I would not oppose that.
Oh, you're not?
I, Linda, I think, when I was in there with you, Bruce said, I think it's...
Oh, he said he thinks, all right.
I wouldn't oppose it.
Yeah, you wouldn't oppose it, they thought it was a good idea.
And I think I said, it's really, I think it needs further study.
Oh, yeah, this is what I got...
I wouldn't oppose it outright either.
Okay. Because Steve had talked about last week about putting an article on, so some of the information that Bruce gave me, we went back into Mass General Law, and there's quite a bit more to it. It starts at chapter forty-one, sixty-nine C, and I got every, got each here a copy of it.
Thank you.
And, you know, it has to be like, you know, brought up at a town meeting, and then it can go on...
Similar to the assessors'.
A ballot question, and then you have to form...
No, 'cause it has to go to a, it has to go to townspeople.
Townspeople.
We're changing the structure of...
We're changing the structure of it, and then, then we have to also get a Board of Public Works, you know, it would be three, three people that are on that board, just like what we have water commissioners. There would be three people on the board, and they would all have like staggered...
So would we meld, would we, would we eliminate the water department?
Yeah, probably, I'd like to look into this more, yeah.
One of the issues CMRPC has with us is because we are separate, they're just normally dealing with water and power, so I...
And this would, and this would bring in, like, say if we had parks and recreations, but I mean, it could bring a cemetery into it and everything.
We could bring the cemetery into it.
Yeah, we could bring everything into it.
That just, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think we should study this more.
I thought it was, I just thought, I just thought it was water and highway, but bringing cemetery into it.
Cemetery, and even some DPWs have even included the school departments in with it, but I don't know if we want it with school, no, we'll take the school out.
It's too mismatched.
Before we run.
But I mean, I think we should...
Well, no, even if we're, if we're running, if we're up in full speed, we should keep the schools out of it completely.
But it's gonna take more, but I think it would take more than just a vote at town meeting this year.
All right, so I will review this, Clarence?
You can both review it.
We'll bring it up at the next meeting?
Yeah, and then if we...
The next meet, the next meeting is where we need to turn in articles, worst case is we could just put a placeholder on a potential article.
And, you know, we could also talk to, you know, town council about it also, and see what they think, too. Because they tried to do this back in nineteen ninety-nine, and it was, it was a ballot vote, and I know it was turned down on the ballot.
It made it through town meeting?
I don't even think it went through, I think that they did something with, if I remember right on the letter, they had gone, wrote the letter to Senator Bruhl at the time, and I think somehow they did some kind of a home rule petition on it.
That's where I ask what special legislation might be.
Yeah, for special legislation, and then there was a ballot question, and the ballot question got turned down, I remember.
Kermit?
Yeah, we have the water commissioners at a meeting, and we were starting a process of discussing procedure going through to replace Bruce Clark. This is critical to that decision, obviously.
Well, that's, that's, that's why I thought about it last month, is now, if we're gonna do it, now's the time to do it.
But the thing, would, it would take time to do this, I think it would take a good year before we could really progress with it.
I disagree, there's gotta be, there's gotta be models out there that we can...
Yeah.
Well, that's a good point. I think we should look at some towns that are similar in size and see what they've done, and see what works and what doesn't work.
Yeah.
I.e. Spencer.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have a DPW.
East Brookfield does, and Spencer does.
East Brookfield does?
And Spencer does.
But even if we pushed out a little further, just Warren or Ware or...
Well, it...
Hadley or whatever.
Oh, I thought you meant Time Wash, all right.
Yeah.
And town council might have...
Yeah.
You know, generic.
Yeah, she might have some, that's why I discussed after reading it this...
And obviously, we need to speak, spend more time talking to the people involved, who are, or Bruce, or, or the rec department. Somebody even said you could put the transfer station...
The rec's already turned over to the highway department, they want nothing to do with maintaining fields anymore. The rec department's already turned over that maintenance of fields to the highway department.
Good.
Yeah, and that's...
They, they control the activities, they do the activities, but the maintenance of the buildings and the fields and so forth could be under the quote DPW.
I would, I would say that, well, if we change it to a DPW right now, I would say that that, the Brookfield, whatever they're calling themselves, I wouldn't say Athletic Commission, but...
Oh, Recreation Committee.
Recreation Committee, thank you.
Yeah.
Would maintain the buildings. And that's through volunteerism.
Yeah.
And we built the dugout, outside roof, one of the dugout roofs, and I think...
Oh, they wanted to maintain the buildings, they thought?
No, you brought up buildings. I would assume that they're still gonna maintain buildings through their funds.
Yes, it was just grass.
And then some of them, like you mentioned to Kermit, I think some towns also include the landfills with the DPW also. Years ago, our, our department, the, did, the person I think was hired through the highway department years ago, before the land, before the Board of Health took it over.
There certainly is a lot of advantages, sharing, equipment sharing, manpower.
Which we, we kinda do that now, but it'd be nice to have one head...
Yeah.
That, that manages several departments.
And then with another, another question we would have to go after, too, when I talked to the town accountant, would be, like, you know, right now, the water department, I think they're kind of pretty much self-sustaining, and at the end of the year, any money that they have left goes into what you call water surplus. So that's another thing the town accountant said, "What will we do with this water surplus money?" That's another thing we'd have to find out.
Well, it goes back into infrastructure, I mean, we can't be commingling money, I mean, that's the other piece that has to get managed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's still a lot of information, you know, it's still a lot of homework to be done on this before we really decide what we're gonna do. That's, that's my personal feeling.
The beauty is we can present as much information as we can, if we put an article on, and then we could present more before a town vote.
Yeah.
Are you thinking of voting to town vote this?
We would have to, by law.
Yeah, by law, you have to go.
To go to a DPW this year, you're saying?
To set the pathway to...
Yeah, set a pathway to go forward.
To, to review it.
Yeah, because you have to...
To accept it, the town has to accept it at a town meeting, and then within a certain timeframe has to vote on it, the ballot question.
Yeah, it says that it has, it has to be at a town meeting, and then it has to be done at least sixty days before an annual town meeting. So I mean...
So maybe, maybe you want to hold off on this until a special, a fall special?
To a fall special.
It's a significant, it's a significant issue.
Undertaking.
It is, it's, that's why, that's why I had all these, that's why I went and got all the information, because we have to accept chapters, it's forty-one, it would be section sixty-nine C through sixty-nine F, so there's quite a few chapters that we have, you know, sections that we have to accept under that. So, yeah, we could, we could do something at a special in the fall and then vote on it at an annual. But sixty days, it's more than sixty days, so it would have, yeah.
I mean, we're not, we can't do this.
It, it could be even done, say, if we had some kind of a special, say, even maybe in February.
Yeah, but if, if this is saying...
No, it wouldn't be sixty, no, it would have to be probably in March, we'd have to have a special.
Yeah, but I'm saying, when I see annual town meeting, it says annual, that means next June.
Oh, yeah, yes, but you have to have a, a special first to talk about it and get it on, and then it has to be voted within that sixty days.
All right, so there's a lot of information here, we could talk about this until midnight. So let's review this, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting, and we'll go from there.
But we look, I think we look to the commissioners, water commissioners to...
Right, not just them, everybody, everybody that's involved.
So, I mean, I think you should, you could continue, you know, with your hiring of a commissioner. You should go forward with that, you shouldn't stop.
Hire the supervisor?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll go forward and see. But conceivably, you know, you hire somebody who, for that job, who could be the DPW.
That's why, that's why I thought of it.
Yeah.
So maybe we want to get it on the annual, have a special election after. So let's just digest this and see where we're at.
Okay, yeah, we'll go through it first, and maybe...
So I wouldn't do anything yet until...
Maybe we could talk to town council about it, too.
We're just going through the process of what sequence we have to go through in advertising and...
Okay.
All right, number eight, I will entertain a motion to allow the chair to sign the WPA request for determination of applicability. This is for the cleanup, any potential wetland issues of the campground property.
Right, right.
I'll make that motion.
Right, a second.
Any discussion? Have you got it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have no other. One correspondence, this is a copy of the letter from Senator Agobi to Governor Baker requesting, basically inviting, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen from the town of Brookfield to attend Mr. Murray's memorial dedication. So there is a letter out there, I haven't heard a response yet. I think it would be a huge honor to have a governor or lieutenant governor at that ceremony.
Just to give you a heads up on that weekend, so Carolyn is going to join us. Linda and I attended last year's Friday breakfast and then memorial service at the junior high school. So Carolyn's gonna join me. In the meantime, Carolyn's gonna give me some bio stuff from Joe, that they have prior stuff used, so that we can maybe read some of that.
I had the same idea.
And I talked to Carolyn on Sunday, you should have come to that meeting.
I had the same, I had the same idea, I was thinking, well, getting together with Carolyn.
All right, so I've got her on the path, so she will join us on Friday.
Are you gonna probably join us, too?
For the breakfast?
Yeah, 'cause we got the invitation from Rebecca already.
I'm probably not gonna go to the breakfast, but I'll probably do the ceremony, and we don't have to RSVP for the ceremony.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll work with Becky to make sure that she has the latest information. So that, that's on Friday.
Yeah.
And then on Saturday, the church is opening up Fellowship Hall at eight o'clock, so that family that's arriving from away or whatever can join, or anybody else that wants a cup of coffee before going down the hill can join us there. And so we'll have some sort of plaque there, because on Sunday morning, we'll have a, kind of a special dedication, that we do anyway for Memorial Weekend, on Sunday morning, where we recognize the veterans, the families, and past, carnations out in the lake, so we'll be doing that on Sunday morning.
And then the memorial committee, we're meeting again on April twenty-seventh, I think, so we'll probably have some alliances, too, on different things that we're gonna have done.
And do you need the pastors available? If that's...
Yeah, we thought, yeah, that would be nice.
If you need some help with that, let me know.
Yeah, it'd be nice, but they, everybody was gonna check, because they were gonna be checking, like, to have the marine, marine honor guides there and different things like that, and see if we can get some, you know, to have somebody doing the taps and the whole, so we're, we'll have much more information by then.
Great.
And we're hoping, I'm sure that the bench will be there a good week ahead of time, so we'll have the bench there, too.
Yeah, they laid out the space.
Yeah, I know, I went down for that meeting, yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
Nope, no one works.
Hearing none, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-four P.M.
I'll make that motion.
Then a second.
And I hear no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.